We'll call the January 16, 2025 Reno County Planning Commission meeting to order. Staff, any caller, please.
Strand.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gerson.
Here.
Welcome, everyone, to the first meeting of 2025. Beautiful day out there today, so we've had some weather in between the last meeting and today. I trust that you've had a chance to review the packets. In those packets were the minutes from the December 19 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion in those minutes.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all any discussion? All in favor of approving the December 19, 2024 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Okay, we'll get right into our business for the takes place the first year. Our first item is electing the 2025 Planning Commission Chairperson.
That's a tough one. That's a tough one.
Chair, will you? The chair will entertain. Yeah, I guess I entertain the, any nominations?
Nominations. Nominations or?
We move that Russ be reappointed as chairman.
I second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Fantastic idea.
Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence.
Nobody else wants it.
All right. Do we need a voice vote, or how do we want to, how do you want to do that? You want to do, you want to do a roll call, or you want to do a voice vote?
We can do a voice vote if you like.
Okay. Boy, this feels really, really funny with me asking for everybody nonetheless. All in favor of approving myself as 2025 Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And you would abstain from that?
I did abstain. Okay, next item of business is election of the Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Okay, I'd like to say so. I don't mind being the Vice Chairman, but I do not want to succeed Russ as the Chairman in a couple of years. Make your nominations wisely.
We have to look at who's going to be on the board here in a couple of years.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jack to continue as Vice Chairman. He has experience, and you've done such a good job of being here. He's very solemn, had to fill in for you. Thank you.
Okay.
I nominate.
Second.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Any other discussion? All in favor nominating and electing Jack as 2025 Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
And Jack did abstain.
Stuck for another year.
Okay. Next item of business, we'll reopen our discussion on case 2023-10, discussion and possible action on creating Article 26 of the Reno County Planning and zoning regulations to regulate commercial solar energy systems. Mark, you had some updates in your packet, would you like to kind of run us through those?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, last month, this board had some additional changes they'd like to see, and I have those highlighted in yellow in your packet here, and so I can briefly kind of go over those. And certainly, if you got questions, stop me and ask, or we can continue on with further discussion. The first change was on page 26-3, under number four, where we had a little bit of a discussion last month on what constitutes unusual and extraordinary expenses incurred by the county for a case. And so what you see highlighted in yellow is what I, my attempt to define unusual and extraordinary expenses. And essentially, I think what we're trying to say is anything that goes above and beyond the, the normal conditional use permit fee of $300 that we charge, we can consider that an unusual or extraordinary expense and, and request payment from that solar company to cover those extra expenses. So that's what I have prepared there for the board to review. Next page, on page 26-4, this came from the discussion again, I believe led by Mr. Chairman here, where we wanted to set a possible limit on a commercial solar project and a distance between different commercial solar projects. And so letters N and O are just what this board wanted me to put in as an initial discussion, and certainly it's subject to additional review and or modification. The discussion ended on having a project no larger than 640 acres, and then having a five-mile separation between projects. Right below that letter P, there was also discussion last month on trying to promote wildlife connectivity, and so I did add that sentence in there as well. However, I would challenge this board that you are going to have to probably come up with some additional specifics, instead of just leaving this as wide open. I think if we want to leave this in the regulations in some format, that we're going to need to come up with specifics that a, an applicant is going to have to provide this board to say that they're promoting wildlife connectivity. So that was the one question that I have in my notes on this one, if, if this wants to stay in the regulations. On the next page, on page 26-5, number three, this board asked that I combine the documents that need to be submitted from Wildlife and Parks, the groundwater management districts, or the USDA. And so what I did was I took the paragraph below that, added it to the one on number three, and then if that's acceptable to this board, then I will just go ahead and eliminate that second paragraph down below. Next couple pages didn't have any changes from this board. Then on page 26-11, page 26-11, I added wording about the developers agreement and defining the term commencing construction. The following requirements shall then apply to a commercial solar energy system after approval has been granted. And so one change that is not in your packet here that I saw is I have the word should there, the developers agreement should, and I want to change that word to shall, so that it should read, the developers agreement shall define the term commencing construction. There's a lot of discussion last month on what does commencing construction mean? Well, I think that's really going to be a term that should be discussed at the county commission level and let them define what they want to see as commencing construction.
Are we talking about trying to set a date as to what we're, what do we think construction is commencing?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would probably be in that, that agreement that they was, when they're going to look at starting construction.
But that will be, that'll be in the developers agreement, that the county commission determines.
Do we need to reference that a little bit in this blurb to say, defining the term and date of commencing instruction, or the date, or defining, defining the date of commencing construction, or something?
Yeah, we can try and further in there by adding a, by providing a date of construction.
Define commencing construction doesn't really say, okay, you've got to set a date when you're going to start.
Something like by providing a date or whatever.
Yeah, something along that line, kind of make it a little clearer, I think, in my mind, at least.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it simple, and maybe it's too simple, yeah, and maybe if you want to have a, a date in there, say, you know, that the applicant shall provide a, a date that they're going to commence construction of the project, we can, I can add some additional wording to that.
But that's going to be, that's going to reside in the developing, development agreement, correct? It's not going to be in the regulations.
Yeah, it would be in the developers agreement, the specifics.
There won't be anything that will determine here that that project has to start on X date. That'll all be at a commission level, county commission level. And not here.
Yeah, I think what probably what Steve was referencing is like, hey, that developers agreement should also include a, like a specific date. I think that's what he's trying to reference, yeah. But we're not going to determine that date, yeah.
Then if, then if all of a sudden that date comes to, you know, that comes to that day on the calendar, if the developer wants to bump that date to any, to any extent, he doesn't have to come back through us. That's all, all at the county commission.
Right, right. I'm good with that. At the bottom on, under number 26-110, I added the reference to the proposed Planning Commission resolution. So this starts off by saying that the applicant and the county commissioner shall enter into a developers agreement under such terms and conditions acceptable to the Planning Commission. That I added the Planning Commission resolution is going to be able to provide them a list of subject matters that may be included in that developers agreement, so. So that was the little change that we added, that we wanted to reference that proposed Planning Commission resolution. The next one on page 26-12 is the request of the board to add the decommission and indemnification requirements. This is taken pretty much straight out of the document that Steve provided me last month. I just copied it right into our regulations here, because that's what the request was. I think for the sake of argument, maybe we'll just skip over that instead of discussing specifics right now, and I think there's one more change that I had on, on the document here. And that last change is on page 26-14, where we added the qualified third-party company. Before, we just had confirmation from a company. This qualified third-party company is actually a definition that we have, and so I made that match that definition tonight. That was our suggestion there. And so that is all the changes. Probably the bulk of the discussion might center around specifics of the decommissioning agreement and indemnification agreement, and so I'm open for other comments or suggestions.
Can I make a suggestion? That we start at 26-3, and everything is highlighted in yellow every page after that page at a time? You agree with it, or disagree with it, or change it or not?
That's where I, that's where I was headed.
I may make just one comment, a couple comments on 26-11. There are like three, four little things there that I think are more grammatical than we need to look at.
Okay.
On item E.
We could, we can cover that.
Okay, we can cover that and then come back to it, okay.
We'll cover it here in just a second.
That way we're skipping.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So 26, page 26-3, item three, actually item four, is everybody okay with the changes that were made into that paragraph?
Yes.
Okay, good to go there.
Plus you want to include playing cookies.
Include a play, yes. That'd be good, homemade ones, though.
There is.
Yeah, okay.
Page 26-4, we have paragraphs N, O, and P.
Yep. Okay, we probably need to talk about the end.
Let's start, let's start with the end, let's start with the end first.
Okay, just throw out a little stuff for food for thought. I did a little research. One megawatt of power basically requires eight to 10 acres of ground. Okay? So one megawatt of power also will power about 172 homes. So, you know, if you take two sections of ground, 1,280 acres, you're going to produce somewhere between 128 and 160 megawatts. Okay. According to, I think, the 2023 census, there are like 22,000 to 27, oh, excuse me, that's enough power for 22,000 to 27,500 homes, based on the information I found. Okay, in Reno County, there are approximately 28,327 housing units. 612, 180 acres of solar panels basically would generate enough electricity theoretically to provide almost all the energy required by the housing units in Reno County. That doesn't take into consideration businesses and industry or anything like that. But that's just some statistics to throw out. So as a follow-up to what you're talking about as far as the limit, what I would propose we consider is putting a limit of, per project limit of 1,280 acres, with the requirement that if it's like two sections of ground, those sections be separated by one mile. So there'd be a section in between, which would then allow for wildlife corridor, et cetera, whatever. And then also, we'd have a stipulation that another solar project cannot be located within X miles, five, 10 miles of that, that solar project. Got to take what you threw out, throw out a little different version of it. You know, a lot of the counties around us have limits on them, 1,000 acres, 1,500 acres, something like that. So it's still in the ballpark of what these other counties are doing limit-wise, but it just makes it a little easier to figure if you just talk about whole sections of ground. Right. And I like the mile in between them, separating them, because then that takes away the issue of wildlife corridors.
I'm having a hard time jumping from the 640 acres up to 1,280 acres. What's wrong with this? Right now, it's 640 acres with five miles, you can have another one. I have a hard time understanding why we would want to change other than what we have. 640 acres.
I'm just throwing out another option there, Harley. You know, I realized that Russ put out the 640 acres as a place to start. You know, my thinking was that was probably low and doesn't stimulate conversation. This is my conversation on the subject. You know, like I said, you know, he's got a five-mile radius between projects. If I doubled that and go up to 1,280, I would, I would propose like a 10-mile radius between You can't say companies, because, you know, these are power companies, they just set up a new company and set up a new project, and the way you go, so you've got to have a distance, I think, that suits what you want, as far as trying to limit the amount of solar that's taking over the farm.
So you're, in a perfect world, they'd be going by, by section number.
Yeah, yeah.
But we know, but we, how would that work if you had an 80 on one side of the road, and then you have a 40 in the next, over in the next sec, next section, and then it's going to be a half a mile to the next 40?
That's something we need to discuss as far as.
How?
Contiguous, you know, I mean, normally those things are designed on a, you know, a one-track of ground if possible.
Right, understand.
For their efficiency. For their efficiency, yeah. I mean, they're not going to have a piece here, a piece there, a piece there. They may have a larger tract, they may have a road in between, you know, maybe 180 acres on one side, or 300, half a section on one side of the road, and half a section on another side of the road, something like that, depending on, you know, ownership and leasing.
Right.
Well, my mind went to, went to the Y. Most of my thinking leads me to, the market needs to determine this. This is not a, some kind of artificial limit that, that we think we can set. I mean, I know that we are the planning commission for Reno County, and so that, that does bring into conversation limitations. But I really think the landowners should be able to weigh in on this. You know, if I happen to be across the road from a 640-acre install, I, I want in on that, too. And I don't want a regulation saying you can't. And then I think of the five-mile limit. You know, this has to be tied to transmission lines, so I don't know the cost to a developer to, you know, extend a line, if they could extend a line, an additional five miles, or, you know, these all would be lined up along the transmission corridor. That would make it a little bit easier, but I'm, I'm really struggling with the why of this, this body wanting to redesign a desired layout. I mean, I don't, I think the oil industry can put a oil well, a row of them for 10 miles if they want. I don't think there's any limitations.
You know, I think one of the reasons, I think we're looking at some kind of limitations is to go back to what we held in hearings on solar. You know, the vast majority of people that responded during our hearing were against solar, because they're the ones that live out in the country, that are the ones that are affected by the installation of these things. You know, a few people that are pro-solar generally are those that live in town where they're not impacted by it.
They do have, they do have the option to not sign leases.
Who? Oh, the people in the country, yes, they do.
And I don't, I don't know what.
You know, and it also, it's like protecting property rights. Well, you know, what if your neighbor puts, wants to put in a big solar center on his ground, and you don't want it? You don't want to be looking at it. It's, you know, 500 feet from your house. All you're going to look at is, you know, 160 or 640 acres of solar panels. You know, so I mean, there's, it's a give and take. You know, it's just like we had when we had the wind. Yes, property rights are important, but I think we also have to, you know, try to respect the non-participating landowners' rights also.
Well, the problem I have with the separation, whether it's five miles, or one mile, or whatever, is you're going to pit one neighbor against the other. One neighbor says, well, I'll lease my ground for 100 an acre, and the other one across the road will say, oh, I'll do it for 95, and then the first one says, I'll do it for 90, and, you know, maybe you got a farm that's been divided by two brothers, and, you know, you, you start a neighborhood problem there.
Is our concern the overall size, or the, or the concentration?
I think those are more than the same to me. I mean, you know, you get to a certain size, you have large concentration of solar panels. I mean, 640 acres of solar panels is, is a lot to look at, if you've seen one of those, and I have. You know, it's a mile square of nothing but solar panels, and, you know, chain link fence.
How's that different than a mile of airport, or a mile of oil wells, or a mile of four-lane highway?
Oil wells are, I mean, you don't have that many in a, if you have a section of ground, you're not going to be putting in that many oil wells on.
Well, some of these old.
They may have four or five wells on.
They have one on every 40 acres, some of these old fields.
That's, that's the exception rather than the rule.
They exist, they exist in the zone area.
I don't know that.
You know, when the panels are only 20 feet high, it's not like looking at windmills that you can see from eight miles away.
Nope.
You know, you go out Fourth Street, I'll bet 99% of the people who drive out on Fourth Street don't see that, that art valley deal. Now, granted, it's small, but it is a half mile off of Fourth Street, more or less. You know, I'll bet nobody knows it's there.
Because it's a small.
Yeah, but it's small, but it's up there also short.
Yeah.
You know, a row of trees would shield a section of solar panels.
Possibly, then.
I'm going to re-raise my question then, is at the time that we were developing this, and we put a 640-acre limit on a commercial facility, I convinced myself, okay, that's a good limit. I didn't expect any of them to be 640 acres, but now to think about, let's, let's double that, I, I can't get my arms around that at all.
Part of the reason I did, I started with 640, and as I kind of blurted that number out, you're right, Steve. I just kind of, last month, I just kind of gave us a starting point for, for conversation. And as I thought about that more, if we limit it to that 640, what does that do for us? That lends us the opportunity that if they want, if they have a section of ground that were 640 contiguous acres, let's just use that as a, as a, as a conversations piece. They have the contiguous acres, 640 of them, and that's the project. That's what they're, that's what they're coming to apply for a, for a conditional use permit. If they choose, with the 640 number, if they choose to have that, another 640 acres, or if it's whatever that next project is, it could be as little as 80 acres, as far as that goes. But it's going to be that, that, it'll be, it'll come before us, and we will, and it'll be up to us to determine whether the siding is good. And it will, it'll come before a public hearing, and the neighbors will be invited to discuss whether or not the siding is good. You know, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to talk myself into the, into the, you know, I'm trying to solidify the 640 number, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture the 1,280 number that you're, that you're giving. Because you're, you're proposing a mile separation between the two 640s.
Hopscotch, three sections, right.
That in itself dictates land use, and that's kind of where Garth is going. Where, why do we dictate that mile, that mile no-fly zone for some landowner? We're deciding that for that person in those sections that they cannot.
I suppose that, basically, that it got a resolution providing some wildlife corridor.
Yeah.
You know, we'll.
That's going to be part of our, our, our conversation in, on letter P, but what I saw in, in, for wildlife corridors, and what I, what research I did this last, last month, is it, that was, that was for, I'm going to say, very large project. In the grand scheme of things, 640 acres is a large project. I'm not, don't get me wrong, but I'm talking thousands and thousands of acres that they, they've made sure that there are wildlife corridors through there. So one would argue that a section, I mean, I, I understand if there was, if there was a chain link fence around a half section that I hunt onto one side of it or another, that's going to create a, a change. And I get that. So we, we'll have to talk to that later. But I, I'm, I've said it, I guess, that's, depending on what number we decide, let's just use that 640 contiguous, that's one project. They, they have, they have to, the applicant would have to argue in that scenario, they'd have to argue every 640 acres that they, that they're putting there. Argue is probably not the right term, present.
Present, yeah.
Each of the 640. And it, if we were, if we were, I wish we could do legal, it has to be within this center, this 640 acres, and it's just, that won't work. It's going to be an 80 that's owned by me, and it's going to be a 40 that's owned by Alan, and it's going to be a quarter section that's owned by Harley in one section, and then let's just say there was. then let's just say they're willing to put a transmission line underneath the road, and the next section, there's going to be another 80 that's owned by Dawn, and another half section that's owned by Mark. Okay? So, there's, you know, I don't know if my math works out, but you can get, you can get my picture.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's...
No, I understand what you're saying, that, yeah, it's, you've got, I think, and I'm like, you know, I could live with the 640 acres, and I would also live with the fact that a project of that size would not necessarily require any separate wildlife corridors.
Right, right.
If you look at, you know, I mean, deer or whatever else, they run around a mile, that's not a problem.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
You know, if there's a road in the middle, that's your court.
Easy enough.
Deer runner down the road in front of my house, so...
So, okay, so, I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, Russ. You're saying that the developer is going to come, they're going to apply for a conditional use permit?
Whatever number we put here, that's going to be the size of their, their project that they can come before us with a conditional use permit. That's the, that's going to be the size of the project that they can, that will be...
Up to that amount.
Each individual conditional use permit will be X number, whatever we decide. So, at that point, we just, we determine, okay, well, this is, you know, we can, then we can, based upon the public hearing, let's just say we have two CUPs, one for, one for 640, and then right across the road, just, let's talk easy, easy numbers here. We have section one, section two, they're right across the road from each other. One would, one would argue that they're contiguous, but there's a road that separates them. Okay, that really doesn't make it contiguous in my mind. But those would be two different, two different applications, two different, two different conversations.
If they're a section each, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, well, and if we, if you...
Even, it doesn't matter really what number...
Or you have a five mile limitation between projects, it wouldn't be...
I was going to say, wouldn't that be considered one project still?
I mean, if you have less than six, say you had 320 and 320 on the other side...
Yes.
Then I could see where that would could be considered contiguous.
Depending on, depending on what number we decide.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, just because they're split by road, I mean, the state has regulations for various activities that do allow property on either side of the road to be included in a contiguous figure.
Okay. My example is probably not as accurate as I thought it should be.
So, I mean, you could have 80 here, 40 here, you know, or...
My point being is, is if whatever number we, we decide in this, in our regulations, that will be the max that, that the applicant can make per project. And then if there is project one, project two, project three, those will all be separate applications for a conditional use permit, and they will all equally be heard separately based upon a public hearing. And so, we can decide placement at that point. It says, you know, the neighborhood says, "Hey, I didn't mind where you did, where they're doing, where you did project one, but now you're hearing, now we're hearing the application for project two." And the, the, the public comes in and says, "You know, that project two is sided wrong. We're hearing, we're hearing this." We can make that decision based upon their, their wishes as they go forward. That's how I'm, that's how I'm looking at it.
Now, the way that our changes are, section O, right below where we're talking about now...
Yes.
Put the five, a five mile buffer to the next project.
Well, here, we've got to talk, talk about it at the same time, but really, they're separate numbers. What, first, we got to decide what that right max size, maximum size is in my mind. You know, is 1280 the right number for the max size? Is 640 the right number? Is 80 the right number? Is 5,000 the right number? That's kind of what we're, what we're trying to decide here.
Yeah, and in my mind, over the period of several months here, I convinced myself that 640 was a good starting point. I did not expect a commercial facility to be as large as 640 acres, but we still need to put a limit on it. And then, a long time ago, we decided we wanted a five, five mile distance from this project to the next project.
We've set a, we've set a precedence with the limited scale by putting that, that piece in there. So, whether we want to continue with that, would, really wouldn't be fair to the limited scale.
Right.
If we, if we eliminate that, that, that circle of, that we're not allowing, that would, if we eliminate that for large scale, my feeling is, is we need to go back and apologize to Art Valley and take that out of the limited scale regulations.
And what's our limit? We said on that, two miles?
Two miles.
So, what I'm saying is, the language we have in here presently, I've convinced myself it's a good, happy medium for Reno County.
Okay.
And if somebody decides to put in 640 acres, they're going to be putting in nearly 100 megawatts of generation. That's a lot of generation for Reno County.
Thing of it is, that most of that is going to be sold on the open market anyhow.
Yes.
For the county, not the power.
Yes. I guess in what I'm, I'll pull full circle where I'm headed. I, I'm almost to the, to the point of convincing myself that the, that that five mile, that any buffer of any, of any type is probably not, we either, we either need to go two miles, like we did for limited scale, or we take out that buffer completely and hear every, every case upon it and how it stands on its own legs and determine how to side it from that point. Because if we take the, if we take the buffer out, then everyone has their choice, everybody has their chance. The developer can go from neighbor to neighbor to neighbor to neighbor.
But if you, if you had no buffer, how do you distinguish between one project to another landowner? I mean, if we, if we still want to have a limit on total acres...
Yes.
Is it just wherever there's a road, then that means it's a new project?
They could, they could go, they could make 600, they could make, let's just say there's, they have 320 on one, on one side of the road, 320 on the other. That creates their project one.
So, they can take...
And then they're, then they come along and they say, "Okay, project two is this 80 acres right next to it." I mean, they, in my, in my, in my example, they could do that and just can keep moving right, marching right along. Now, that project two, each, every project would have to stand on its own validity based upon the, based upon the record and then the public hearing. And then we can decide, you know what, that, that one needs to be placed a mile away. Or, public says, "Shazam, I love it. I want to be part of it. Bring it on." Then, then we can decide whether that, whether there needs to be a buffer or not. That's, it's kind of a hard way of doing it, but it, it turns, it gives all the property owners their rights. That's, it's either that, and then we go back and we say, "Okay, Art Valley, we've made a mistake in your applications, you can put them closer than two miles apart." To get, you know, that, erase that buffer.
You know, they can make, make a solar farm as big as they want.
Yes.
It would just be a combination of many different farms.
It would have to be separate projects.
So, they could put in four or five sections of ground right next to each other if they wanted to.
Yes, they could.
Which is what I would like to avoid.
Well, that, that goes...
That's where I think the separation and putting in the buffer is beautiful.
I'm, I get it. I'm going, I'm playing both sides of the fence. If we, if we, my, my, my two choices are either zero or we stay with two miles like we did with the limited scale. That way, it's, it's consistent with the regulations that we already have in place for limited scale, and we can move on from there.
Yeah, you could say that, but also, the limited scale is a much, much smaller project.
Yeah, but it's still a project.
Well, yeah, but, you know, two, two of these limited scale things, two miles apart, are not even noticeable hardly.
Right.
You know, two 640 acre solar projects, two miles apart, is going to be noticeable.
Right.
You know, I would, I mean, I like, I want a buffer, but I would like to see it a little bigger than two miles.
I'm, I'm just...
Just because of the size of the project.
I'm just trying to sit here and make, and have my conscience clear that I am, with that, with any kind of buffer, we're taking, we're taking away somebody's right to have a project. That's, that's my, that's my conscience right now. If I was, if I was a neighbor that was in that two miles, and I had a 320 acre piece of ground that was mostly pasture, and to be honest, if it was grass that didn't hardly grow in a drought anyhow, I'd want some, some source of revenue on there. But if I'm in that two mile buffer, I'm done. I got to figure out how to make my cows grow on that.
Which is something you've always had to do.
I get that. It just continues on, but you're taking away the opportunity, and that's why, that's why I say, we get a chance with every, if we limit the, limit the size right out of the gate, then each project has to stand on its own legs.
Yep. So, if we could stack projects, so say you've got four sections of salty grass that no one wants and no one lives around, and nobody cares if there's a project out there, and everybody's on board, all the neighbors, you know, there's one house out there and they don't care hypothetically. So, if we're okay with that, then do we need a hard and fast upper limit? Or do we just say, we're going to, we're going to judge each project on its merits and listen to the feedback of the public for whoever wants to bring a project?
Well, the reason I, I think we need to set a limit is so the applicant knows how to play the game. And not, and that sounds, playing the game might not be the right terms to use here, but the, so they know, just like we're, we're telling them that there needs to be a development agreement with the county commissioners. So, if they know that 640 acres is one, they've got to, if they want more than 640 acres in that, in your scenario, Alan, that they would have to build, they would have to have multiple projects. Their, their project in, you know, as they build it, you know, that would be, that would be, as we, as we hear the, the cases by the, by each of their own, 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 talking points, we can determine whether or not, you know, yeah, they have a, they have four sections, to your example. We probably could, we, we have the right to say, "Hey, you're going to have four separate projects, they're all right, and they're all, four sections are right next to each other. You can do one big fence rather than a cross, rather than a big fence and cross fence that into force." You know, we have that opportunity to give them that waiver within the conditional use prod, conditional use permit process.
So, then what's the advantage of having four different public hearings and four different sets of paperwork that Mark has to read?
Well, that's a good point.
If we can, if we can de facto combine them into one, they're four separate projects on paper, but they're all contiguous pieces of ground, and they have one fence, and there's one entrance and one guy doing mowing, then why don't we just treat it as one project?
It probably would be a bigger issue not using your scenario of these four sections all nicely organized. I would see it as maybe one section, okay, nobody really, nobody cares if that's going to be approved, but there may be a group of houses in the next section over, and they might say, "We don't, we know there are setbacks, but we want..."
Thread the needle, so to speak.
Yeah.
On the next section.
And we have to realize that these regs only pertain to the zone area.
Right.
So, I mean, which is the, unfortunately, is the more populated area of the state. And, you know, we've heard from a lot of those people and their opinions on the solar projects. Now, yes, there are some that are, could be glad to sign leases on them, you know. You know, there are leases, I think, already in existence, from what I've heard. But, you know, it's, so you approve this one here, and the same company comes in and says, "Well, I want to put one right next to it," or a mile away, or two miles away, or three miles away, you know, and here you don't have anybody complain about it, and over here you have a lot of neighbors come up saying, "Now, we don't want that next door to us."
That's the...
Then you get back to the issue, it's a land use. You know, are we going to, are we going to be able to say, "No, we don't think that's a good fit"?
That's where the, that's where the advantage of a smaller number is over a bigger number.
Oh, yeah.
Where 640, we could manage it into the, into the higher populated areas.
Maybe, but I think it's also a reason to provide some buffer between projects, you know, try and keep a little peace out of the county.
How many acres is the Reno County landfill?
Have to wake Dawn up and ask.
Ah. I'm awake, I'm listening.
What is that, section or section and a half?
Yeah, it's probably, I mean, I can't tell you off the hat, it's probably all told, section and a half, so at least that. Yeah, it's, not all is obviously being used as landfill, but it's within that area out there.
I was just thinking of, having to live close to something and how that landfill has progressed and, I don't know if it's a comparable situation, but it seemed, I thought the, the amount of acres would be in, in this general realm we're talking about.
Section and a half might be a little high. I know they've got like at least a couple, quarter section.
That you're not falling off of it. Because you have the order on all four sides.
Yeah, I don't know, it might be, it'd be comparable.
So, when it comes time to expand or purchase the next quarter or whatever is available, what's, what's the process for that? To increase the size of the landfill, how does that happen?
The, well, it'd be conditional use permit if they need to build additional cells, similar to what we did before. We've done projects, you know, conditional use permits with, with the landfill.
So, they have to acquire the land though?
If they don't own the land already, I mean, if you're talking about acquiring land, they obviously purchased the land, and then they'd have to do a conditional use permit under our current regulations, or right now, if it's, you know, just grassland right now, not being used actively as landfill purposes, then it's a conditional use permit, so.
My, listen to the conversation, I don't know, I, I think 640 is low. I like Steve's idea on at least, you know, doubling that.
Well, you have, I would, you have to remember, out of 640, that's not all usable acres.
Right.
And we have setbacks, and you have geographic, or, you know, geological features that, ravines and whatever, that may not be buildable.
In the regulations that I saw, yeah, it didn't go as, as low as 640, but then diversely, I think, you know, having a five mile to even, I've heard 10 separation, that's, that's pretty big. It's a pretty big separation for projects. I, you know, to Alan's point a little bit, I would hate to have to do multiple projects, multiple conditional use permits for the same area, regardless of where the separation between projects lies. I mean, it'd be nice to encompass that all in one big conditional use permit, you know, if it's in the same general area. General area being, you know, all in the northeast part of the county, southeast part of the county, wherever, you know, I, it's like, if you got one project in the Buell area, that's obviously a separate project than the one that's going to be down, you know, closer to Haven, for example. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to have to process multiple projects when it could be treated as one project. So, I think, you know, we need to be a little bit careful about doing something like that in the regulations where there... in the regulations where they're having to apply for multiple conditional use permits to essentially have one, one big project.
Does, I know we're not supposed to think about money, but what does, what's a lease worth?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Something private that we don't get into.
Yeah, I know, I'm just thinking, if it's, if it's a hundred dollars a month an acre, some guy's gonna really make a killing on his section and then his neighbor, his land's been devalued.
I imagine it's.
Because he can't do it at all.
It's probably reasonable amount because they're losing, the farmer is losing the use of the ground.
Yeah.
For twenty, twenty-five years.
But you're talking about the, the, the area that we're gonna not allow in between.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The exclusion area.
Yeah. This guy's lands, you know, it's almost like if one's irrigated and one's not, and one that's not can't drill well. Then let's get into a whole different subject, but you're devaluing the neighbor's ground.
I don't think you're gonna devalue it, you know.
I think he's meaning you're devaluing way that, cause that person doesn't have an option.
We don't have an opportunity.
Yeah.
He's already in the red zone.
Yeah.
Now, my memory may be failing me, but one part of the reason we had a buffer on the limited scale solar was to prevent a developer from using our limited scale regulations as an in-run to put a large project in.
That is correct.
That's correct.
And so that wouldn't really be applicable here because this, this is the, these are our guidelines and regulations for the large project that we were trying to avoid, having to sneak in through the back door of the limited scale.
Well, we're just trying to prevent a larger, you know, facility. So putting a buffer in to provide some separation.
So as comparison, right quick, um, the Cedric County one, fifteen hundred acres, not located in more than six contiguous sections of land and two mile separation.
Between any projects.
So you're at six hundred and forty and five miles right now.
Five to ten.
Or twelve eighty.
So what is the reason for the separation?
The only what I can think of is to prevent massive, you know, solar facilities. So if they have fifteen hundred acres and they put another fifteen hundred acres right up against it, so you've got three thousand acres, you know.
It's probably.
Almost five seconds around, covered up with solar panels.
Maybe so you just don't have several miles of, of potential solar panels. I mean, that's gotta be the reason.
So read that again, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred acres, not more than six, six contiguous sections of ground and two mile separation.
Between projects. So the fifteen hundred acres has to be contained within those six sections of ground. That's the way I understand it.
Project shall not be located in or on more than six contiguous sections of ground.
But limited to fifteen hundred overall, eh?
Fifteen hundred, yes.
Me, that type of project would, I would hope encompass everybody that would want to be included in that, that project. Living to Garth's example, he lives across the street, we're living at six forty or twelve eighty. Sorry, Garth, you can't have it because, you know, it's gonna be over that, that acreage.
It would just depend on the matrix of leases and how they fit onto the six contiguous.
Yep.
You know, six contiguous could be, it could move around a lot.
They can, yes.
You got three thousand eight hundred and forty acres to work with. Yeah, you got thirty-eight hundred and forty acres.
So I said maybe thousand and forty.
Yep. Got that much land to work with and it's a maximum fifteen hundred.
Cedric County's a little more densely populated too, it'd be a little harder to do.
So if you're really creative with that, I mean, you could have each one of those six sections could be less than fifty percent covered in panels. So you could have like the center of each section with a little narrow connection and you wouldn't have more than four hundred yards of solar panels visible from any road.
Right.
Looking at Douglas County, they've got a thousand acres.
Do you want me to change it or I'm, I'm doing something out of my head here?
We wanna change it, we don't know what.
We use the Cedric County math. We could, we could potentially see upwards of ten projects south of the, south of the Big Ark River. Potentially.
Uh-huh, south of the Big Ark. So we're talking just the zoned area?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking that southeast corner of the county.
Right, right, but we're already excluding the Keen reservoir, so.
So six, six miles. Six contiguous, six, six sections. Maybe a little high. Oh, I'm looking at a couple different maps and they probably aren't exactly what I'm looking at either. I'm just, I'm just doing some, I'm just doing some rough math in my head. Yeah, there wouldn't be ten. Maybe ten east of Hutchinsons. Cause let's just look here, here's, here's six. I bet, skip two, couldn't have anything here, skip two, here's another six. West of Haven, then east of Haven, there's another six, 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 where, how many was that?
Oh, that was seven or eight.
Yep. So let's go south of Highway fifty, there could be at least a.
Yeah, several.
Yeah. But realistically, there isn't that kind of transmission capability.
But that's not really our, not really our concern though.
Well, but when, when you're talking about getting approval to build these things, getting approval to build a transmission line, I know can be extremely difficult and sometimes doesn't happen.
So there may be physical room for ten projects, but I mean, the, the chances of that happening are probably between slim.
I know, I'm, I'm trying to put it in my perspective here. I'm not trying to say, yeah, it could happen, I'm just trying to put in my mind what, what could potentially go in there. You're right, hardly the transmission lines is, is a big deal.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but it ultimately.
Many people's minds is more ugly than a wind generator.
Ultimately, those transmission lines aren't part of our conditional use.
That's right. But, you know, I'm trying to think as a utility company manager, which I was for a long time, that, that's part of the process. That's, that's led into my mind when I argued myself up to six hundred and forty acres and with five miles between.
You know, you know, when they were looking at the wind turbines, you know, where they cited all those proposed turbines, my understanding was that was because of the proximity of existing transmission lines.
Well, it's proximity of the location of Gordon Evans Plant, which was owned by now Entergy. And it was gonna be a, I think about a forty mile transmission line have to be built to make that wind generation work. And that's why they went to that part of the county rather than somewhere else in the county.
Shorter distance to tie in the major transmission facilities, yeah.
The economics of a project is sometimes controlled by cost of the transmission line. I think all the projects that have been considered in the Cedric County are all close to transmission lines, they're all where they are.
Another variable in my mind is what's happening in the electricity market. Supply, demand and cost seems to be escalating rather quickly. Anticipating future demand and, and how, how is the industry gonna supply all this electricity?
Well, I think, I think you're gonna see a big shift in some of that in about a week. You know, the President Biden has had a, a big emphasis on green energy and electric vehicles and incentives and all that. And I don't think the incoming president shares some of those thoughts.
Well, the tech industry is, they're leading the charge.
Oh, sure. But I think, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm not a fan of electric vehicles anyway, I don't think they're economically viable yet. Many reasons, but.
So what's, what's the appetite of this, more, I'm, I'm, all right, I'm, I'm being swayed, my pendulum is swinging.
Well, I.
Okay, so taking Mark's example from, I, I read Cedric Counties and I had in my mind that we did not need to follow anybody. I finally put the, the other counties' examples away. I put them on the bottom of my pile and I says, we gotta build some for Reno County. But coming back with all the conversation that we're having here, I, it, it's almost like that, maybe Cedric County had something figured out. You know, to your, to your example, Alan, that, you know, fifteen hundred acres spread over six contiguous sections, the impact of that, it could be all in one spot, it could be spread over to where there isn't. A, a huge visual impact and I'm, I hate saying that because we're not talking about visual, we're talking about placement on that piece of dirt. That would, that would accommodate a couple of things in my mind. The, the wildlife corridors, okay? It would, it would, it would tend to accommodate that piece and it would tend to accommodate the the areas that we wanna use as buffers.
I don't follow your logic, you're saying if you, if you have fifteen hundred acres spread over six sections.
Yes.
Okay, how does that, I mean, you're gonna have to put in wildlife corridors at that point.
Well, they are, they won't, they are gonna be covering everything continuously.
The maximum.
Well.
If they could, if they can, they will.
Just the math, fifteen hundred acres on top of, on, on, what was it?
Six sections.
Six sections was, was thirty-eight hundred acres, so we're.
So a half of it.
Yeah, we're not even, yeah.
But are these contiguous acres?
No, the, the project wasn't, didn't have to be contiguous, but, but.
But they could be, but they had six, within those six sections, it could be, yeah.
It could be.
Yes.
Didn't have to be, but yeah.
It was though, six hundred contiguous acres and they put a fence around that whole thing.
Yep.
Then you're gonna have to provide wildlife.
This is true.
But in the zoned area, there aren't too many sections that don't have a road. There, there's a, there's a few, but there's not a lot.
And there aren't very many sections out there that have, I mean, have, that have at least a tree row through them or something.
Do we have any information about this industry that we're trying to regulate? I mean, obviously, we want some business to happen, at least to me, we want some business to happen in Reno County. So it has to work for them at some level. Do we have any information that says this is our minimum, minimum requirement to entertain a project?
I haven't, I haven't run across that, I haven't, and I really truthfully haven't researched that question, so I can't answer that for you.
I have any of that Reno County.
We do know that Entergy is putting in a seven hundred megawatt combined cycle facility very close here. And that's, and it's capable of running twenty-four hours a day, not just when the sun shines. And, but it will be, my projection, it will be cycled to some degree. But being a combined cycle, it's going to be an extremely efficient plant. Somewhere in the neighborhood of, I say sixty-three, sixty-four percent cycle efficiency. That's the, the industry goal right now. And, and when you look at industry wide, the power that's needed for the future is not to, for homes, it's for servers, servers, you know, they're even talking about putting, well, I think not just talking about, they're gonna put three mile island nuclear plant back in service just to generate power on a twenty-four hour day basis, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year to provide energy for the servers in that area of the country.
You mean computers?
Yeah, that's Microsoft, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you look, I mean, there's a huge chip facility going in there in Phoenix and, you know, I know that's been, providing power to it's been a big, you know, energy or issue there too. You know, I mean, it's.
So what happens if we, if we're too conservative and, and we say, okay, we're gonna go with six hundred and forty acres and developers come knocking and they, we're going, we're going to the next county. What's the process to say, oh, we need to change our regulations?
Be a new public hearing at that point, we'd have adopted regulations, if we wanna make a change to it, we're doing this discussion again and then we're actually holding a public hearing.
So really, let me ask you this, you're talking about these averages.
Yeah, yeah. Truth be my process.
Do you feel that it'll have, you know, pros or cons, impacts one way or the other on the solar industry in Reno County, the need for it?
No, I don't, I think that Reno, Reno County is going to be co-ops like we've already seen. And they're just trying to survive economically and keeping their electric rates low. by generating some of their own power.
Right.
Rather than buying it off the interconnections.
So you don't think this, this big plant that Evergy is gonna put in will affect?
That's why I said.
Solar, the solar, you know, utility scale solar industry.
Because it's only, only when the sun shines does it work.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, it also only works because there's a 50% tax credit.
Yes.
And if the tax credit deal dies.
I haven't gone there yet.
The industry dies.
It's sort of like the wind turbines, you know, the green energy credits that these companies have gotten have made them viable for them.
I believe that will cycle. Some of the subsidies is gonna go away and then it'll come back. They have a new president by that time, but that industry has cycled over the years. Sometimes wind generators get built, 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 and then all of a sudden they don't build any. And why is that? Because the subsidies go away.
I think all, all energy sources depend on subsidies that come and go over their lifetimes.
That's not true. If you build and put out a plant like what Entergy is gonna build here, they don't get any subsidies. That goes into rate base and the rate base determines.
They do buy natural gas to run the thing though.
Well, it, yes, and they're, they're gonna use natural gas.
There's a lot of subsidies.
Very efficient plant.
I believe there's a lot of subsidies in the oil and gas business to produce it.
None that I know of.
And to, to use public lands to produce it.
Okay, we're, we're not really saying fiscal policy tonight. I think we're trying to decide how big of a project we want to allow.
Exactly. That's, that's where I was just opening my mouth to say too, Alan, I were, we were drinking the same coffee.
I've got lots of opinions, but I don't know that any of them are relevant to this, so.
No plate of cookies out there, not getting hungry.
For sure. So, okay, my pendulum is swinging a little bit. I, I think in 12, I think in two full sections is probably not a bad number. At 1,280 acres, the acre number is, is okay. I think, I don't know that we need a mile separation in between, you know, if we split that in half like your proposal was, Steve, you know, splitting that in half with a mile separation in between that, you know, between six 40s. I think we could probably stay with that 1,240 as one piece, as one contiguous.
Maybe, I mean, but then you're gonna bring up the issue of wildlife again.
Right.
There you're looking at a two square mile.
Yep.
You know, fence, basically, so, you know, which is, I think it's gonna, you know, create different wildlife patterns.
It does, it does. And I'm just trying to start a, trying to get up the baseline to where we can get, to where we can make a decision here. So 1,280 is, what's, what's the, what's the opinion of the rest of, rest of us?
It's a big improvement from 640.
Yeah. Does it need to go bigger?
I don't think so. You know, I like, I like having some limit to the size. And you know, 1,240 acres, okay, if you don't want to do a mile, then you, I still think you're gonna need to provide some kind of a wildlife corridor through the project. Whether it's a, you know, 200 yard, you know, break in the fence.
So we can discuss that on, on, on the other point that we need to look at yet. So is, is 1,280?
If, you know, I would, I would go with that, provided there's a buffer, you say three miles.
So I need to ask you a question so that we're clear. So 1,280 on how many sections?
I haven't gotten that far in my mind. I'm just looking at total size.
I think you say 1,280 contiguous, 1,280 contiguous acres, which means they all have to be adjoining.
So a road can't split it?
Yeah, a road could split it.
Okay, so you could go four sections on, is that what you're saying?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so we get it clear.
Yeah, well, I think, to me, when I say contiguous acres, I think, you know, land across the road from each other as long as they're both being used for the same purpose are included.
Okay. So what do you, what do you think, Alan?
I could go with 1,280.
Harley, I know, I know, you've been, you've been.
And I'll, gentlemen, part of what's in my brain is my past experience and that is I don't see anything bigger than 640 ever been economically viable for Reno County and getting the power to the customer. And that, that is driving my thought process.
Well, I guess one way to find out is if we take 1,280 and, you know, they don't want to put in that big a project, you know, that's a maximum. So they can put in a small, they can put in 100 acres or a quarter section or whatever.
Because if we have a 1,280 limit, somebody can still come in with a 500 acre project. There's, we're not stopping them. But if we have a 640 acre limit, someone comes in and they want to put a 650 acre project in.
That pushes them to two projects.
There's no doubt, yeah. So I think that's a reasonable balance between not having entire townships being just solid panes of glass and also not, not accidentally writing regulations that get in the way of an otherwise viable project. Like I, I believe Harley, when you say that we don't, won't ever see a 1,500 acre project. But I think having a set of ground rules that aren't gonna get in the way of stuff that's, something that could be economically viable. I think that's a, I think that's a good compromise.
Okay. Consensus?
Sounds good.
1,280? I know Harley, you're still thinking 640.
Yeah.
Are you okay if we, if we write 1,240 in that regulation?
Majority rules here, gentlemen.
What's that? 1,280, yeah, 1,280.
Well, but under your assumption, it's kind of self-regulating. If, if they can't transmit generation for more than 600 acres, then they're not gonna want to build more than that.
So we don't need to worry about.
Your economics is gonna govern the size of the project up to that maximum. You know. And, but I still feel we need a buffer, at least three miles between projects.
So letter, letter, letter N on the regulations is gonna, where it says 640 now in yellow, we're, the way I understood it, we get consensus on 1,280.
They're throwing a smiley thing. Why not make it 1,300 acres? There's, there's no value, once we jump away from 640, there's no value in 12.
Change it to 1,200 acres.
1,200 acres or something like that.
I'm fine with that.
It's a lot of be logical and not let somebody divide it by sections.
Yeah, I was, I was doing it in multiples because most farmland is in multiples, in, in a fraction of that section. And that's the reason I was staying with that, that multiple.
So what do we do about the five miles?
How many acres do you lose per section to setback?
Between facilities.
What do we have for setbacks? Not many.
Setbacks are figured into the, into the total acres. So, all right, we've had a lot. So are we staying at 1,280 or are we going to 1,200? Make it a round number?
Round number, 1200.
From a planning, from a planning standpoint, Mark, what, what's a, what's a better number there?
1,200 is fine, it's nice.
Nice round number?
Do we want to make that 1,200 contiguous acres?
Yeah, that's completely made.
That would be fine. I can live with that. You okay with that? 1,200 contiguous acres? Jack, you good with that?
Yeah, I think so. What does that mean?
Means they all have to touch.
They have to all touch or be across the road from another part of the project.
So does that make it a second project if there's 100 feet in between for a wildlife corridor?
No, 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 we'll discuss that down the road here.
What if it's a thousand feet then?
Then we gotta talk about it.
So that is another project. So what's the, I guess that's a letter P.
I want to go back to the contiguous part because I'm just thinking of the lease process. And if, if somebody just does not want to lease their ground for this purpose, that may break the contiguous chain in the overall.
All you have to have, all you have to have is two corners touching to make it contiguous.
Or at least being across the road from another piece that's within the project. There has to be some part of it touching or in proximity to, by that I mean, across the road from the existing part.
So I see where you're coming from, where there might be some, might be a 40 in there that they don't want a part of it.
If they don't want part of it, you can't, you know, we don't want to start just hopscotching this thing.
No. So they gotta figure, that's up to, that's up to that.
That's developers' problem, not ours.
That's correct.
We keep talking about the word lease and, you know, those co-ops, they didn't go out and lease the land. They bought the land.
Yes, they did.
And I believe a facility that we're talking about, they're, the developer's gonna go buy the land. That's my opinion, purely an opinion.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so 1,200 is a number. Contiguous is, 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 is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so we got, we got letter N hammered out. You got that down?
I do.
Me, me.
We've had a good long conversation about it.
Never, never say.
I told my wife I'd be home pretty early. Well, I said, early, you've been on too long.
We'll try to get you to Chick-fil-A in another hour. How does that sound?
First page.
Fast one item.
This is a hard one though, I like.
Yeah, I think we're getting through the, these first three are gonna be the hard ones. The rest of them, I think will be, I mean, we get.
Yeah.
The buffer.
I'd go with three miles.
I don't care. I think it's gotta be more than two. It's gotta be two or more.
Yes, I was, I was just.
I don't care what number you can make it, 22 if you want to.
Yeah, my agreement.
Well, I like two for consistency purposes.
Yeah.
Because I can't, I can't, I don't think I could give an answer why one's two and one's three.
The size of the project.
So the limited scale was two so that somebody couldn't, so that a large scale could come in and put them so close and make it a large scale when it's, the regulations is meant for limited scale.
Yeah.
That's why that two. I'm not saying two's a bad number, but there's a different reason. It's to prevent a limited scale become a large scale.
Good point. Now we're just discussing, you know, the separation between large scale projects.
This, you're talking about separation between projects. This would be a separate project. How far apart one?
You know, with two, I could go with, I'm, I'm, I could go with Harley, go three miles.
Do three?
Three's with me.
What do you think? What are you thinking, Jack?
On earth? I don't know. I'm not sure there's a big difference between two or three. I just like consistency. And there would be less intrusion on property owner rights with the two mile buffer as opposed to three.
I agree with that.
I don't, I don't really see that as an issue. You know, the two mile, I mean, the two mile, as Don has explained, that was done for entirely different reasons than what we're discussing here.
Yeah, but he's, he's talking about a different reason than what you're, he's talking about the exclusion of a landowner in that two mile buffer.
Yes.
Not, not that there's gonna be.
Or the three mile buffer instead of two mile buffer.
Exactly. He's concerned, more concerned about the landowners in that buffer.
That's life.
I think two. I think zero.
I don't, I don't think we go zero. They're just gonna open the doors for massive projects.
I'll go with two miles.
Still like three.
We got three twos.
Either three or two doesn't, if we're already allowing projects that are larger that are gonna be economical, then, I mean, whether there's, I mean, is there really gonna be another project two miles or three miles away?
No, I don't think so.
Probably not.
So I don't, either one, I'm fine with, but.
Let's land on one.
All right, land on three.
Three.
Okay.
Good with three? You want two, three, nine? Okay. Let's, let's, let's do a vote. We're separated, so the chair will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we make the separation, a buffer between projects, three miles. Look, this is measured as current outline below.
And who, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, been moved in second. Any discussion? Staff, I think we need to take call and roll on this one. Stran?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Gerson?
Yes.
Motion passed, 42. Three miles. Okay, item P, wildlife connectivity.
Yep, yep.
Can we somehow rely on the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks to, I mean, up above there on item L, they're already in the picture.
I don't know how you're gonna rely on them. They're not gonna come out and, you know, advise us on every possible solar project that goes in on how, what gaps we need to leave for wildlife. I mean, to me, it doesn't need to be a mile. That was a, you know, it was just a thought. You know, you can make something like, you know, 50, 50 yards, 40, 50 yards, something like that. Right enough rule for the deer to go galloping through as they want or the coons to move around or whatever without really disrupting the plant, you know, their patterns too much.
And others consider each end.
Sure, sure. Just let me know where, where the project is. Get a lease on, hunting lease on the other ground, joining ground.
We are not experts in that area.
I don't know what's necessary.
Like we have said, will promote wildlife connectivity. That's the, the applicant will do that.
Yeah, I'm not a wildlife biologist. I have a lot of opinions on wildlife, but it's not necessarily backed up by anything other than my gray matter between my ears, so I, I'm okay with leaving it the way it is. And then the applicant, and if somebody needs to hire a wildlife biologist to provide an opinion on it, then we can make that a condition during the process.
You know, when they've got, okay, I was looking at provisions on Douglas County. They say wildlife corridors, vegetated route or other connection that allows movement of wildlife between areas of habitat. A wildlife corridor may be naturally occurring, such as streams, corridors, or construction breaks in the continuously fenced areas other than for roads. A wildlife corridor allows animals to travel through the area that may be fragmented with solar energy conversion systems or other features rather than using nearby roadways. So keep them off the roads so that we don't, you know, have too many more deer getting run over by cars, so.
So I have a question for you. So if you're wanting to leave P in there, the applicant shall discuss, shall discuss. What does that mean in a regulation? I understand that if that's in a resolution for a development agreement that that, that should be discussed. But what does that mean in a regulation?
Well, I had the same question. I mean, that's not a very definitive statement.
No.
No, that noted we're talking about. I think we need to make it. I think we need to make it.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of discussion, I think, it was just kinda, this is what is being discussed, so I recognize it, yeah, but it needs to be.
So do we need to move it over to the resolution?
That's, I'd go. I'd above that, to me, takes care of it.
Item L to me is if only if there's a endangered minnow in that stream and within the project. And it's not for the.
Oh, please.
Whitetail deer, whitetail deer that are native to the area.
Now, don't we cover that? Any hypothetical endangered minnow, isn't that?
Well, that's what, that's what letter L says, lands identified by K W, K D W P or U S, U S Wildlife, wetland, wildlife habitat, or critical species habitat.
Wildlife habitat's pretty broad.
It is pretty broad.
Yeah, I mean, it's. So, I don't know, I was driving to Hunch yesterday, I guess it was. And just, uh, towards a peril, well, there was a deer hanging over a fence where apparently it had got hung up in the fence and died there. You know. They took it down today for something. But, you know. That was just a barbed wire fence. Look at it. Butler County, they just, they deal with it by the use of permeable, perme, 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 permeable fencing, excuse me. Which is constructed to allow wild, allow wildlife to pass through the fences, encouraged a minimum of five inches should be provided to allow passage of small wildlife woven wire fencing with larger holes than a traditional chain link fence is an example of fencing that accommodates wildlife. I don't know how you equate that, to be honest with you.
It's like I'd let people through, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Permeable is the hedgerow.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm, I'm all for promoting wildlife connectivity, 'cause I, I would, I would want them to be able, want to have free movement to a point.
Yes.
But I'm like Alan, I'm not a biologist. I mean, I can tell you what the patterns are of the deer where I deer hunt, but I'm not a biologist. So I'm don't, I don't feel like I can determine. I mean, without, without somebody going out and making a survey of that ground and saying, yeah, we have X amount of deer traveling at this place, we need a corridor here. I don't, I.
But they'd have to, they'd have to sit there for a year.
There, there, there you go. So how do we determine, how do we, how do we determine that the, that the project, the developer needs to, needs to promote it?
You could, could you make a statement saying that the developers shall provide adequate wildlife corridors as established in consultation with Wildlife and Parks or something? You know. 'Cause they would be the ones knowledgeable of, you know, wildlife movement probably in those general areas of the county. You know. Or you could ask all the neighbors, 'cause they know where the deer are.
I mean, I think without specifics, it's tough just to make those broad, brush statements like that, 'cause then this board's gonna have to review that, and how are you gonna determine is that adequate or is it not adequate?
That's, well, that's something that, you know.
That's why I think it's.
They would have to, either that or a wildlife biologist of some type, you know, recommend, recommend it. You know. 'Cause I mean, you're gonna, you know, basically fence in almost two acres of ground. Or two, you know, two sections of ground.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah, but it also could be six miles long and a quarter mile wide.
Yeah, it could, yeah, could be.
If every parcel is in the project.
But that wouldn't.
Every.
In this area, 'cause there's roads.
Or it could be five hundred acres, and it could be spread into two sections, and it'd not be a big deal. And not the whole entire parcel either, it could be just a portion of it.
It's hard to determine whether, how big a subject that is until you see a diagram of the project.
Yeah, I know, it's quite a four projects.
So, 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 this is just, I'm not telling you what to do, 'cause I don't do that, but it's something to think about, unless you're going off base. But you would think that when it's time to create the development agreement, that they're gonna, everybody, the county commission and developer, they're gonna have the planner from them and see whether this is an issue or not. And I would think that that's the only time you determine, and then, you know, then the county commission can say, yeah, this needs to be looked at, we need to bring in whoever we need to bring in and help us make that decision. But until you see the project, I don't even know, I don't know how you put, you can't put that in the regulations or broad thing like that.
You know, it could be a five hundred acre project.
It definitely could be suggested in the resolution.
Yeah.
In the developer's agreement.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Right.
It depends where it is.
Depending where it is.
Exactly.
Depends on the shape, size.
If it's close to the river, there's, no more than I know about wildlife, I'd think there'd be more of them roaming around down there than there would be in other places.
Well, if you're creating the development agreement, you know where it is.
Yeah.
You've got the plans in front of you.
Yeah.
To me, the, the purpose, one of the main purposes of the wildlife corridor is to provide the wildlife means of getting a point eight to paint B for keeping them off the damn roads. Because, you know, we have enough problems with, with deer on the roads as it is. Cars running in, you know, into, you know, box of wood, you live in the county, you know.
So what's wrong with the word, language we have in there? It, it says somebody's gonna address it.
Shall discuss.
The applicant is going to address it.
Do we wanna move it to the resolutions?
I think so.
And just take it out, take it out of the regulations.
I understand where Don's going, 'cause it's, 'cause this is a suggestion, not a regulation.
Yes. Alright, so I'd go with moving that over to the developer's agreement.
Alright, that was easy.
Go to this project specific. And, you know, you don't know what, what's needed until you see what the layout of the project.
Right.
Alright. They were moving to next page. Isn't that amazing? Good stuff. Uh, page twenty-six five, paragraph three. That was a combination of two paragraphs there that Mark made, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, everything's good there?
I believe it is.
The way it's written now?
Yep, the way it's written, and then with the deletion that you have highlighted. Next piece was a small one. Couple small ones, uh, page twenty-six dash eleven, paragraph twenty-six one oh nine, I think we had a, had just a change, you put shall instead of should. The, you know, text, and then, and then the day.
Steve wanted me to reference like a date or something.
Yep, yep, yep.
So I'll do that. Is what you had, grammar or typo that's coming up?
At twenty-six one ten, the agreements and requirements, so the planning. That had to do with the developer's agreement, and, and you added the, the resolution that we worked on.
Item E, uh, first line says any old steel, concrete pads or other equipment will be filled with the soil, like it shouldn't shell, instead of will. Keeping with our verbiage choices.
Something that I had, it was rolling in my mind, we have a developer, we have a developer's agreement that the county commission is working on. Okay, that is, that has nothing to do with the regulations. It has, we, we gave, we've created the resolution for the developer's agreement. This decommissioning piece is almost a carbon copy, it's just the other side of it. We've got a developer's agreement, and then we have a decommissioning.
Agreement.
Agreement. And so I believe that that, what we see in twenty-six, paragraph twenty-six, uh, dash one eleven, the decommissioning and indemnification requirements probably would need to go into a resolution for, from here for the county commission.
No, because that's what we, originally, we had it in the developer's agreement, and then we moved it to a separate regulation. That was done at the last meeting. 'Cause we felt that this should not be, something that should be negotiated. It's something that should be set out so that a developer, when he goes to propose a project to Reno County, they know at the end of that project what's gonna be required of him.
A development agreement and a decommissioning agreement is not negotiated, I don't know what you mean. The board of county commissioners create it, they can get input from the developer, need to, but it's not negotiated.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna, it's a, it's a back and forth between the developer and the county commission. Yes. Whereas if we put, you know, the way we have the decommissioning agreement in as a regulation, it's there.
Well, we can, we can say that there needs to be a, a decommissioning agreement. We can, we can state exactly that, that there needs to be a decommissioning agreement in place. And then based upon our, our paragraphs, we could build a resolution that says, hey, county commission, you need to be looking at these items.
Well, that's the same thing, that's the same thing, just leaving it in the development agreement. We don't need a separate reg, resolution for that.
Right.
I would, I would, I want to have it in the regulations saying this is what's gonna happen when this, this project goes offline, and what's gonna have to happen to take, you know, restore the ground and everything else.
Well, if we, if we put it in the regulations that we, that there needs to be a decommissioning agreement in place, okay? But that's, and if we, if we leave it at that text, then that would require the, the county commissioners to do just that, and then with a, with a, with our resolution, they, they have a roadmap in which to build that decommissioning.
But they could agree, you don't have to do anything.
Yeah, they could, yeah, exactly.
They could.
Where if you got down, this is the what, this is what we want done.
This is what we expect to happen when the thing goes offline.
Then they don't have to negotiate, it's like this is what you gotta do.
But see, it would be the same as a development agreement. See, we, we didn't spell out what we wanted in the development agreement in our regulations. We, we gave, we gave a, we gave a resolution that says, hey, in our development, in the development agreement that needs to be with the county commission, we would like to see these thing, these things shall be discussed. Okay, that would be the same, this is just the other side of the coin.
You're saying we would like to see these things, this is not saying we would like to, we're saying these things are required.
Okay.
That's between what you're saying and what we currently have proposed.
What's that?
I said, this is, this is finite, it's not to be discussed.
Yeah, when this is done, we want to go.
This is what happens, and this is how, what, how you have to restore the ground, they know what to expect.
Yeah.
And what is.
And item H, the surety bond is.
Yep.
I, I guess in my mind is not negotiable, but I'm the county commissioner.
Well, it's not, it's part of the decommissioning agreement, that has to be, make sure that they have the funds to pay for that.
So where do we, where do we come in deciding what that surety bond is? 'Cause we're not, we're not, we're not.
It depends on, I think if you read what we have.
It says approval by the county commissioners. So why don't we just put the, why don't we just put that in a, in, in a resolution for the county commissioners to decide? Because we're not deciding a dollar now.
No, we're not, no, that's, it depends on the project. You know, the decommissioning cost, I mean, if you have twelve, twelve hundred acres of solar panels versus five hundred acres of solar panels.
So are we?
It's gonna be totally different, but the requirements of restoring the ground to its previous state are the same. The costs are gonna vary dramatically.
I, I'll, I'll just say, I don't disagree with anything that's stated in what needs to happen. I'm just, I'm just thinking the place for it needs to be in, in the county commissioner's side of the house rather than in our regulations side.
I don't agree, I think this is, this is important enough to me that I think we need to have this decommissioning agreement as a required requirement. Not a, something that we shall do and negotiate.
Well, if you, if you look at, if you look at paragraph one under twenty-six one eleven, the applicant shall submit a decommissioning plan, which describes, describes in detail how the solar energy, how it will be removed, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, you guys can read it. The decommissioning plan shall address in detail include the following. Now from that, we can say, as included in the, in the, in the resolution.
Why not just leave it here? That would have to be tweaked, yeah, and you could just say, they shall submit that decommissioning plan, so the wording there.
Then you're taking all the meat of that and putting it over in a, basically, the, the development agreement, which is saying this, you, you, we may do this, we may not do this.
You know. I just, I just think that the county commission has the, has the, has the attorney sitting right beside them. We don't. They have the, they have the.
The attorney's gonna look this over.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna do it, they're gonna be forced to do it through the regulations, so it's not like they're gonna just excuse all that.
I get it, but from the whole, the whole negotiation piece, it can be all done in one, one house rather than what we're doing.
What? Negotiation, I mean, this is negotiable. It's in the regulations, so they don't even need to negotiate it.
It'll be mandatory, they'll be mandated to sign a decommission.
Provided, yeah.
You're gonna see in the regs, it's just the specifics of it would be.
Determined by the commissioner.
By the county commission.
Would be determined by them, exactly. With your input, 'cause they're gonna get your resolution and say, oh, okay, so, you know, they're, they're interested in having the holes and voids being filled in and so on and so forth.
Instead of, you know, taking it down four feet, oh, we think twelve inches is probably good, you know. Break your pile blade, you know. So I, I would, I, I still think these need to be in the regulations and not part of the development agreement. I'm very strongly about that.
So, so, so you don't think it's up to the board of county commissioners to create the decommissioning agreement?
No, it's in the regulations.
So you wanna tie them to this? And if there's anything, if there's anything they wanna change on this, it comes back to here with a public hearing to change it?
Yep.
Same. Or it would be like a, a variance situation, you know, if there's something in there that they don't want to mandate on that add one, then they have to go and apply to the B C A for a variance. Versus. Huh?
There's a process.
Yeah, there'd be a process for, that's, versus just being able to say, okay, yeah, well, we don't think it's necessary in this particular project to be able to mandate this, we can just excuse that suggestion by the planning commission.
You know, here we're like, we're talking at the twelve hundred acres.
Yeah.
Solar panels. It's not a small project. You know, Harley doesn't think they'll get that big, I hope he's right. But if they do, then I, I feel this is, this is very important. So that the, the developer understands what's gonna be required at the, at the end of the life of the project.
They will know, because they will also have that, that resolution, I mean, I think that was a concern that was brought up previously by county commission. And the applicant will have a copy of that planning commission resolution probably before, way before it even gets to a, a application and a public hearing. And so they'll know what we're gonna be expecting to see, they're gonna know that we have to do a developer's, they're gonna know we're gonna have to do a decommissioning, and here are the topics that we're gonna be looking for potentially, or more.
It just feels like we're trusting the county, the county commission to develop it, okay. But we don't, but if we leave them in here, we don't trust them to take it down, okay.
No, you don't do that, but just put everything back in the, in the development agreement and forget about it.
I, 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 I just think we can, I just don't think.
No, I'm, I'm still very, very firmly, I think this needs to be in a separate regulation as we have it in this draft.
Well, yes, my opinion is we hire an executive to run the county, we elect five commissioners, and they all have counsel. And they can make good decisions. We don't need to dictate to them what, how they do their work.
I don't think we're dictating to them, that's, these are, these are just a part of the regulations. That's, these are, these are just a part of the regulations for utility scale solar projects that we're developing that provide the applicant, you know, the information he needs to put together his conditional use application. Shows him what, what the ground goals are, you know? And it's, you know, I mean, what is, I guess, I guess I would like to ask, you know, is this being too nitpicky and too specific, saying, am I asking unreasonable things by, in the items that are in that, in the part of the regulation?
I, I stated earlier that I, I agree with, with, with the content. I'm just trying to, I just don't think the, the placement is in the right place.
Well, if you don't, I mean, if you agree with the content and you put it over in the development agreement, then you're, you're opening up the possibility that, that content may not all be in there in a negotiated agreement.
Well, that's up to the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, it's up to the Board of County Commissioners, I understand that, yes. But we, you know, we, we spent two years or something like that working on these solar things. So I think, you know, this group has a pretty good understanding of, of, you know, solar projects, what's involved in them.
I don't disagree with what Harley said.
Not disagree with the county commission, but I don't, you know, they're gonna just see an application, you know, once it's gone through here and we make a recommendation.
I don't disagree with what Harley said. The, the counter to that is if I were a commissioner, I don't wanna have to custom build every, every project that comes up. That's why we have regulations that as much as can be cut and dried is already cut and dried. And here you go, developer, this is, this is our set of regs. I don't wanna spend our time and energy debating this, oh, are you gonna require that? We don't really think it needs to be required. Yeah, it does need to be required. So, you know, there is a, there's some efficiency by standardizing through regulation instead of leaving it in a, a resolution that says, well, here are some things that you might think about. I don't know if it would be a debate or a back and forth as much as maybe what this board's kind of anticipating. I, I think it's gonna be more of, this is what we want to have in our developer's agreement, and this is what we want to have in our decommissioning agreement. And if you don't wanna sign those agreements, then you don't have a project, even though the conditional use permit would be, say, approved. Because you have to have those two agreements in order to have a project, even though we would have an approved conditional use, period.
So we put this in a development agreement. Why not leave it in the regs so that, you know, they know, and that's just one other thing that the county commission does not have to deal with, you know, when they, they're, you know, working on a, on a solar project.
Because all we care about is where this thing is placed and what kind, where, if it's in, if it's in the proper, proper placement.
No, it's not what we care about. We care about the, the regulation.
And that would be.
Be restored.
We, we do, but we're, our, our job is determined whether or not that solar panel needs to be placed at that, that particular spot on that particular piece, piece of ground. That's our, that's our ultimate job.
So you're saying our job is land use regulation, not, not doing county commission?
That's correct.
Is this land use? So we got the, what are you gonna use that land for when the project's finished?
And, and it goes right back to what we did with limited scales, while too. We had one blanket statement that says, you'll restore that land to as way it was originally, period.
But all the details beyond that, that's not our business. That's the county commission and that's the developer and the owner.
I wouldn't even end up, I would just, I would just, you know.
Yeah, right.
And that was, that was different because those, those projects generally, the applicant owns the ground. So, you know, here, you know, the odds are it's gonna be leased.
Right.
I don't think they're gonna go out and buy, you know, twelve hundred acres of ground at, you know, two or three thousand dollars or more an acre, you know. Particularly if they're gonna try to buy it for a solar farm, because then the price is gonna get jacked way up.
Is it possible, if, if this is left in the regulation, is it possible for the commission through the developer's agreement to say, well, we don't think you really need to remove access roads because those might be useful to somebody? Absolutely not. If it's in here, they're doing it, whether the owner of the land wants it left in or the county commissioners want to leave that road. You're not leaving anything in.
And if you read that section like on your example, access roads, here, these regs that we have now say only that it will remove those to the landowners, what he wants. So he wants to keep them, he can. He knows, if he wants them taken out, he's gonna take them out.
But only the roads, but nothing else. So like, so like, say there's a shop building that's built, and the owner wants to keep it at the end of the project. As, as the regulations are written today, there's no way to save that shop building.
That's right. When you leave them in the regulations, you handcuff the Board of County Commissioners to creating a development or a decommissioning agreement? That they have to abide by this one hundred percent, when it's their job to create that and bring in whatever forces they need, attorneys, outside people, whatever, that's up to them. And they're the ones that have the teeth to handle it if it doesn't happen. And if the developer doesn't agree with them, there's no project. Now.
Well said, well said.
Well, how is this different than us debating six hundred and forty acres versus twelve hundred acres? That's not in the development agreement.
Right.
I mean, you're, you're making that regulation. Really, couldn't we say, projects such to, this can be found in the resolution is determined by the county commission? Do we need to?
Why don't we put the whole damn thing in a develop, in a development agreement? Just say, hey, get with county commission, develop the terms of your project. Don't worry, there are no regulations. Here's the box that we gave to the county commission, and, you know, they'll do what they want.
Well, one, there, you know, not every project has a development agreement and a decommissioning agreement. And it, you know, you guys have been chosen to create regulations and for their, for their view and acceptance. I think a decommissioning and a, you know, development agreement is totally different than regulations. I, everything you say may be in that development decommission agreement, but it's, but it's, and, and they need to take your suggestions and use them or not use them, but, but to make them a hardcore to where they don't have that choice is, I believe that's their job.
Because it is, it is written in the regulations, that's just one last thing the commission has to deal with. Simplifies their job, so to speak.
And hope they want it.
Yeah, and hope they want it, yeah.
And hope that it works at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, it's gonna work, you know, whether it's in a development agreement or in the, in the regulations. Basically, if you have the same type of requirements and the county commission, you know, enforces those, then, you know, it's whatever works at the time. You know, twenty-five years from now, when those projects go offline, who knows what's gonna happen.
And, and at that time, when that project goes in, then they'll have more information to create that agreements, the Board of County Commissioner will.
Right? Well, no, I mean, the, I don't know how that, the, the project really affects the decommissioning agreement. Because, you know, it's pretty well outlined what would be required under the decommissioning. And if they have it, then they've gotta deal with it. If they don't have it, then they don't have to deal with it. As far as those, those items that were, were dealt with in the decommissioning agreement.
I mean, I think it's difficult to create one of those unless you say that the land will be returned back to original use unless otherwise negotiated with the landowner. That covers it all. That's it.
I mean, that's pretty, pretty simple. You don't have to get into the.
You know, you got a bunch of concrete, the ground or lines, you yank them up unless the landowner says differently. It's his land. Landowner might wanna keep the fence and raise an analog. Might wanna keep the shed, might wanna keep the road to going in it or whatever, but.
Nope. Do you have a couple other grammar or spelling stuff, Steve, while we're, I'm thinking?
Oh, yeah, we had that item E that will should be shall.
Yeah.
Going over on item I, we have in the middle of it, commissioners to the applicant record when the solar panel is on, on not, should be do not.
Okay.
Item K, say the start date should be the date the applicant provided by the county. I, I don't understand what that means.
Remailed, should be, I think, remade.
Okay.
Remade.
And they're probably copied right from.
And there's a section L.
Section L.
Yeah, an L, there's an is, there should be an R on the second line.
There's two remails in there.
Remail?
Yeah.
See, right up here, should be remade.
Yeah, well, there's.
Section H and then section L.
Should be remain, yeah. Good catch.
So remain liable, remain.
No, I didn't proofread this too close.
Yeah, where was the other one at? Where was the other remail at?
Section K. Oh, no, L, I mean, L, sorry.
It's in shall.
Oh.
Where was the first one at?
At H.
H.
Final paragraph of section H. Probably should mean on letter K, like, the start date should be the date the applicant provides the county, or some wording to that. I'll have to go back and look at the sample regs that you gave me.
And then there's an L on the second line, middle of it, there's a, it said incurred that is above, maybe that should be R above.
R above. I'm hoping I just copied this pretty much verbatim, but I appreciate you didn't, and I'm not that bad about grammar. I'm not an English major, but I hope I'm better than that. I appreciate you looking at that, though. I think I have like. It started on, it was on twenty-six thirteen, so the first.
Oh, I was looking at page.
Yeah, next page over.
I was looking, okay, I see it.
I think it's a different sizes in there.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking on twenty-six twelve, and I didn't go, I didn't catch that one over to another page.
Can't just copy and paste, I guess.
No, I couldn't. I didn't have, I didn't have the Word document, that's why I had to type it, so. Yeah, I didn't have the Word document.
Well, gosh, I shouldn't have asked. I don't have it either.
That's why I just copied it.
Yeah, exactly, so, that's why I say, I'm hoping this is just the way they have it written.
Just, I make it sense that we're divided on this, so I think probably ought to take a vote. So chair will, will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we retain the decommissioning and indemnification requirements as presented in, as part of the regulations, as presented in section twenty-six, one eleven, with the corrections as we've noted.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Staff, will you please call a rolling strand? Motion is to leave it in the regulations. Schaefer?
No.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
No.
Martin?
No.
Gertsen?
No.
That motion failed.
Okay, I, I have a question. I, I could go either way on this, but then I think, you know, we spent a lot of time over the last eighteen months or so, setbacks and height requirements and very particular measurements, and we didn't seem to have a problem with putting those in regulation. And so I'm, I'm not sure why we're, I, I understand, I understand both sides of it, but looking back, I'm, I'm struggling about what exactly is the purpose of a regulation? If it's just about land use, then well, yeah, we think solar installations are okay and county commissioners, you just design whatever you want it, want it to look like. So the, to me, the setbacks, the height, all of that, that's land use and that's in your wheelhouse to develop. The decommission is way after this board makes a, a recommendation on, it's, it's past me, it's, it's passed after I issue permits for the, for the project. And, and to me, a decommission agreement should be an agreement between the governing body and that applicant. It's not in your wheelhouse, if you will. I think it's in your wheelhouse to develop what we would like to see in a set of requirements, but it's beyond you to go back and enforce a, a decommission agreement, and it's beyond me.
Well, in other words, the, the county commission is gonna tell the landowner what they're gonna do to his ground once they pull up stakes and leave.
And they're gonna tell the applicant what they're gonna do.
The landowner, the landowner.
Right.
They don't have to do anything to it, you know, whatever they wanna do, you know, so, you know, this, you know, I, I still feel very strongly about the regulation because I felt it provided the applicants the information they need to know what they're gonna have to do when the project goes away. It also protects the landowner because they have the assurances of how their land is gonna be restored once the project ends. But, and that's, so, I was just leaving it up to county commission to let them tell the landowner, you know, how the land's gonna be restored. Because the developer's gonna do what the county commission says that the decommission agreement should do, and that's all they're gonna do.
Well, when the county commission create those, they're gonna be listening to every input that comes, that's shoved at them.
Yep.
The landowners included.
Yes.
And then the developer agreement and the decommissioning will be just as binding as these regulations.
Regulations require it, you know.
Agreement may require it.
May or may not.
That's, yeah.
That's the, that's what I have, that's what I have a problem with.
Yeah. Because the, even on your regulations, until they're adopted, the Board of County Commissioners can decide what they wanna, in that or not in that also.
So if they don't like that section, they can send it backwards to.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, they'll send it back and, if they don't like another aspect of, yeah, they'll send it back.
They keep it in.
Right? Thank you.
So. Okay, so the next action in that would be for you, direction for you staff is to build, build a resolution that would reflect the decommissioning requirements.
Okay. With the changes suggested by this board?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do a better job of proofreading it. And also just to say something, when it comes to that resolution, between now and when there, if ever it's ever needed, you can give the Board of County Commissioners even more suggestions, and everybody can, and all it takes is amending that resolution, not coming back full blown to nothing. So you can just keep adding that, and as you learn more, you can add to it, give it to them, amend the resolutions and put it in there for them to look at and consider when they create that, and they need to.
Because we can amend that resolution without any public hearing or anything.
Right, yeah.
That's one of the things, yeah.
That's why it's a good deal.
That's my understanding of it, why I voted like I voted.
But, because.
It's technology involved.
Resolution is only a suggestion. What? Resolution is only a suggestion of what, what they need to consider in developing those agreements.
That's true.
Yeah, but in the regulations, it will say it's mandated they come up with some kind of decommissioning, yeah, on that with, yeah, it'll be suggestions, but yet.
Yes, suggestions.
Just like we had with the development agreement. There must be a development agreement.
There shall be, there shall be a developers' agreement, there shall be a decommissioning agreement. And as new technologies evolve or new ideas come forth, if we want to, if we want to modify that resolution, let's have a discussion, we'll come, we'll modify it, and it'll be available without having to go through a big public hearing process, and then everybody gets a copy of that early on. They're, you know, there's been some concern or so that a, a developer is not going to know what's expected of them, and I tell you, it's, it's not going to happen because they're going to obviously see our regulations, and when I first meet with them, first thing I'm going to hand them, here is our planning commission resolution for what we're going to be expected to see should this project go forward. So it's not going to be a document that's going to be hidden and forgot about or anything.
There was Board of County Commissioners concerned about if a project come before you and you approve the land use, so you would approve that, then automatically it's going to happen. And they had no say on the development or decommissioning agreement. It's like, once you approve it, then, then it's going to happen. That's not true, because you approve the land use you can, but to get that permit is subject to that agreeable, or to that development agreement and decommissioning agreement that Board of County Commissioners are going to create. And if the project, the person that wants the project doesn't agree with that, there's no project, because there's no project until those two things are developed and agreed on, period.
Those are the gatekeepers.
They're the gatekeepers. And, and I understand, you, you want to make sure that stuff's in there, I get that. And you, and you hope that they take it seriously. I think, I think if that went, if the development agreement, if a project came in next week and a development agreement was, was made by the Board of County Commissioners and the decommissioning, it'd probably be roughly what you guys have. But I don't, I don't know what's.
We saw, we saw that exact same example in the win, in the win hearings.
Yes. So, and, and when they create those, they need to bring in everybody they need to bring in, whoever they need to bring in, and, and create it. And they have the money to do it, and they have the money for the attorneys or the experts or whatever to develop it. We don't.
Yeah.
Okay. Just opinion.
Any other discussion on those?
Do we need to agree?
We've already did.
We already did.
Yeah, that's what we voted on. Yeah, that's what we voted on.
Okay.
Is there anything else we need to discuss in those, in the, in the proposed regulations?
I don't, I don't have anything.
So timeline, I know you've told us, but it's been, there was a Christmas in between the, the.
March first.
Yeah, but is it March first?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we, if we get a clean copy in February.
When will it go to the county?
When will it go to the commission?
It wouldn't go till after, well, I mean, we meet February twentieth.
It's late in the month.
No, they, they, they won't have a meeting until twentieth.
Um, they meet the twenty-sixth.
So that, that could go to, you could have that on their agenda that quick?
I don't know, with, with some.
Yeah, we can make that happen.
With some discussion.
Maybe. I guess, I guess the net, then the ball would be in the commissioners' court, whether or not they want to extend moratorium or not.
That's right. They can accept your.
If they, if they have them in their hand, they can accept it that day as written because they'll have plenty of lead time to look at it. Or they can say, they can extend the, the moratorium.
Well, they're not going to have too many days to look at it. If it's the twentieth, then they're meeting until the twenty-sixth.
Yeah. Well, but it, but what I'm saying is it'll be up to them to extend it because they have the document in their hand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other business brought before this board?
I don't have anything.
See none?
The chairman has allowed me to leave to go to Chick-fil-A.
There you go. The chair will entertain, entertain a motion. Second, all in favor of the chairman say aye.
Aye.